For October 3rd, 2011. Can you please call the hall?
Admiral James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Novick.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Panaleen.
Here.
Chairman Morse.
Here.
Alderman Schoenhayder.
Here.
Alderman Palmer.
Here.
Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent, Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The first item this evening is approval of the minutes of the September 6th committee meeting. Are there any comments or changes?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. The second item is, or the third item here is a discussion regarding the purchase of two multi-space parking pay stations presented by Chief Berger and Deputy Chief Birmeister. Is he here?
He is.
Oh, there he is, hiding in the back.
There's a lot of us here. Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the committee. The Police Department is before you this evening to request approval for two of the pay-by-space parking stations. During the budget process this past year, the Police Department briefed the City Council on the need to replace our existing pay-by-space collection boxes, and I have a couple of pictures so you can see what I'm talking about. This is one of them that's on the north end of the West Depot. It's a stand-up box. And these are the boxes that are underneath the roof on the south end of the West Depot. The collection boxes currently in use at the West Depot have been in place for approximately 20 years, and they've been refurbished once, repainted at least twice, and are beginning to deteriorate. Looking see on this picture, there's some rust along the bottom, which is not such a good place to have the rust because then the money will fall out the bottom. Additionally, it's difficult to fit dollar bills in the slots of these boxes. That whole bottom graphic on those boxes is instructions on how to fold a dollar bill to get them into the slots. Because of the older design of the boxes, the community service officers sometimes aren't able to determine which parking spaces have been paid for and which haven't been paid for, so the city's losing revenue both on the violation and on the payment of the daily fee. The daily fee is $3 at the West Depot. The current boxes are also labor-intensive for the CSOs. After collecting the coins, because we accept coins, paper money and tokens, the CSOs have to separate out all the tokens, and the tokens are what we sell at Municipal Services. The rest, the cash, the coin, and the currency are taken to the bank, and then the CSO has to return the tokens back to Municipal Services for reselling. The purchase of the new pay-by-space boxes was budgeted for and approved in the FY12 Capital Improvement Plan, and the amount budgeted in the CIP budget was $35,000. Subsequently, because of the TIF district money, there was $30,000 available, which was committed to the project, with the remaining $5,000 to come from the original $35,000 that was in the CIP budget. Let me get you a chart. This is a chart of the six bidders that bid on the project. The Policeman, the Police Department went through the bid process. The high bid was, as you can see, $36,465. The low bid was $28,062, and we're recommending the total parking solutions for $33,280, which would be under the $35,000 authorized by the City Council. The low bidder, Automated Parking Technologies, didn't meet all the bid specifications. They were about, they didn't meet about four of the bid specifications, specifically in the type of material specified. We wanted stainless steel so we don't have a problem with the rusting. We won't have to repaint the boxes, which Streets does for us. And then the type of receipt printer. Once you put your cash, your currency, or your credit card in the machine, you'll get a receipt back saying, "I've paid for this spot," so it's very easy to tell which spots have been paid for. Additionally, the Automated Parking Technologies, which was the low bidder, provided inaccurate references as part of the bid process. They also don't have, they don't currently have the cellphone technology which we wanted. And what that allows is, let's say you're running late for the train. Instead of stopping at the pay box, you can get directly on the train, call up the pay box from your cellphone, put in your parking spot number, and pay for your spot via your cellphone.
As opposed to texting while driving?
That is correct. You're texting while riding instead of driving. Total Parking Solutions, which is the one we're recommending, met all the bid specifications. They have a local office in Downers Grove. They have units placed in Glenview, Barrington, Vernon Hills, Schaumburg, and Libertyville. All of the Total Parking Solutions references were very favorable, and IT and finance both liked the machine. I have a pic over here. This is an example of what they look like. We would only have two machines out at the West Depot, but that's kind of an example of what they would look like. If you have any specific questions about enforcement or getting the money out of the machines, I have CSO Dennis Smith here to answer those questions, and I also have Deputy Chief Birmeister here to answer specific questions about the bid process because he's the one who processed all the bids.
How many machines are there? I'm sorry.
We would put in two.
Total, are you purchasing?
We would put in two of those machines.
Just on the west. What about east?
The machines, we could use two machines and it would cover the whole parking lot. They would be on the east side of the depot so it would be easy access from the platform.
So you're only buying two machines total?
That's correct.
Completely.
For the whole parking lot, that's correct.
They're really, I mean, I buy these things all the time. They're typically about $7,000 or $8,000, so I don't, I don't know what you expect here that's different.
The...
That's what I was curious.
Yeah, the Deputy Chief can help you. What we put in the bid, what we put in the total was also the maintenance and the software for the three years also. Go ahead, Andy.
Yes, this is, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This isn't just for the machine itself. I can give you those specific numbers if you'd like. I can look those up also, but this was the maintenance, the software involved.
No, I understand. I know what these things cost. Did you check to see if you could piggyback on somebody else's purchase of these, for example?
We did not.
I mean, it's just expensive, but...
We did not. We used the, some bid verbiage from nearby towns, from Barrington, from Libertyville and Vernon Hills. We also did, went out and did field testing. Excuse me. So we were pretty confident with the product that we are recommending to you tonight.
Do we charge for parking on Saturdays and Sundays or just Monday through Friday?
All week long.
All week long.
Mm-hmm.
Are you familiar with the PNL on parking? I mean, I wouldn't have a clue what we're grossing in revenues and what this expense and the expense of collection, the personnel and stuff, how that all runs out?
I don't have it with me, but I can get it for you if you'd like.
Yeah. And that would be relevant because it is a lot of money, and just hypothetically, if the cost of this and the cost of the personnel to collect the money isn't giving us a reasonable return on the investment, why would you want to do it? I mean, shouldn't we know what the numbers look like?
Usually when the, when you look at this kind of solution, there is, there is usually a benefit in terms of both people who pay and the ability to tell who's paying. So usually it does pay off, but it's usually in scale that it pays off?
But I mean, are there 400 cars a day, $2 a day, or, you know, are we grossing 250,000 a year out of this, or 300, or...
I can get the, I can get the information. I don't have it with me. Go ahead, Andy.
You're just, you're not taking cash, are you, anymore?
We do.
You might want to consider not taking cash. I mean, that's really not what people are doing these days.
Yeah, we've eliminated, with these machines, we've eliminated the tokens and we've eliminated the coins.
Well, you may want to consider eliminating cash. I mean, really, people are quite used to it, and all around the country, all parking is really moving away from cash of any kind whatsoever, and I'm glad you're doing the cellphone technology because that makes it quite a bit easier to pay for it. But really, in Chicago and major cities throughout the country, there's really not been an issue with cash. Cash is just bad in this system. Take it from a guy who used to run a toll road. Got rid of cash there, too. No, really, I mean, it's just, it's hard to handle.
Well, cash is labor. It's labor-intensive is the problem.
You have problems with cash, as you know.
Right.
So it's just not a, I mean, I don't, I don't think you're asked, you're giving that much of a convenience to people. People are used to paying now by credit or by, or by their cellphone or other mechanism. And maybe that's one of the privileges, and we drive people, you ought to think about the rate structure as well in terms of driving people with passes versus what it costs to pay, and, you know, you could probably do a couple of things in that regard.
Sure. Tom, have you seen the Skokie Swift system they have for parking down there?
I haven't seen that one specifically.
Yeah, that's all electronic. You put your credit card in and then they give you a, like, little credit card to use for parking, and it debits it for going to Cub games or whatever, but they don't do cash either, except they do have a cash changer machine. You could put $5 bills in or $10 bills, and it goes on a magnetic stripe card that gives you a little account balance, but you don't handle cash per se.
I have a question probably for Vic. Is something that generates money a TIF-eligible expense?
That doesn't change the outcome. It's really the capital investment. If it's within the TIF district and it's an improvement that's within the TIF plan, then we can expend that fund.
Okay.
Just kind of stating the obvious, you know, the existing system, you can't really use a charge card, so by having this, it's a tremendous convenience to those who actually use a train station, and obviously we're experimenting here because we have to dedicate the funds for TIF before the end of the year. So thank God you're taking the initiative. Hopefully, this will expand to the east side at some point because there's a need for it. I've gone through the fumbling for quarters when I initially moved here, and inevitably you only have six quarters when you need eight or more when you're running for a train, and you get a ticket. So I think it'll be a tremendous help. As far as the equipment, and this is just a curiosity, it seems like you're steering towards one particular company, the Kale. Is there much difference between the Kale machinery as compared to the other companies that provide this type of machine?
We looked at several aspects, not only the machine, the components, the design of the machine, whether it was user-friendly or not. We look at some that were very confusing to the customer itself. We also looked at references. We paid a lot of attention to that and got nothing but good references from Total Parking Solution. Also, our finance department did a lot of, some checking on their own as well. As far as all six vendors, they met the finance requirements for the credit card purchase and the, and our software integration with IT. So all six met that. So it's basically on the references, the machine itself, the durability with the stainless steel, with Total Parking Solutions being the only one with stainless steel. And if you go out to the west side train station, you can see we use extensive amount of salt, and it's deteriorating even the cement out there. So we thought for the long haul, it'd be wise to go with the stainless steel.
And just in a practical sense, the amount of time that it takes for someone to go and monitor compliance or payment on the old system, the new system, I'm sure will cut the man-hours that are spent?
We currently have a part-time CSO that does that four hours per day, five days a week. This will allow people to pay for the weekends or extended period of time, and has a 1,000 bill capacity in the cash reserve vault, so we anticipating, only have an empty that about once a week.
Okay, so the saving of just hours where better things could be done will be a benefit also?
Correct. And that'd be about, savings of about $22,000 a year.
Thanks.
This is the cost of the complete installation, including bringing power to the two pedestals and a data communication line?
The data communication is via cell phones, so there's the monthly service fee in that. That was, that's another part of the cost for three years that we incorporated into this. The cost of the cement base, our building maintenance department agreed to do that, so they're, we're going to do that ourselves and not have the vendor provide for that. The location of the boxes being on the east side, our right on the opposite side of electricity on the inside of the depot, so it's very easy just to tap through the wall to catch that and bring that underneath.
What's the anticipated life of these machines?
Some of the stainless steel, they say has a lifetime warranty with the, not a warranty, but life expectancy of the stainless steel cabinet. We bid out the specs so that the components, the interior workings are just interchangeable, so when they fail, they're just replaced. The most expensive portion of that being the motherboard in the computer, they say has a 10- to 15-year life expectancy, and they have, this company has products that have been in existence for 14 years.
Battery backup in case power goes down?
There is battery backup. There are heaters involved in these. Not all of them came with heaters, but with the winter, and that affects the screen visibility without the heaters, so...
Just to, just so that I make sure I understand. So these will accept cash? They will accept cellphone communication? And I assume they'll also accept a credit card?
Correct.
Okay.
They'll also accept those other cards that, debit-type card, but the vendors, most, all the vendors caution us away from that because they tend to be more problems than their worth and create more staff time involvement with those.
By any chance, is there a smartphone app from this vendor that people can put on their smartphones so to make it real easy to pay?
Yes.
So just out of curiosity, and I'm not a train rider, so you would know more than I, we don't do any monthly parking situations here. It's all pay-by-day, per day, per...
No, no, there's still permit parking in the lot, and that will continue. This is just addressing the...
Just for the daily pay.
And there's, the volume is about 125 to 175 pay daily vehicles in that lot.
That was my next question, and wondering what the volume was, wondering if two of these were enough, but it sounds like it probably is.
They say about one for every 100 vehicle users.
Okay.
The lot, capacity itself is 400 vehicles, but only about half of that or a little bit more than half of that is...
Daily.
Daily use.
What's a daily rate currently?
$3 a day.
Have we done any calculation to determine when these will pay for themselves?
We're, we did it when it came before the City Council in the wintertime. As I recall, it was about $15,000 a year that we were losing in enforcement ticketing and lost revenue, and we anticipated, so, a couple of years.
Have you guys considered or has anybody thought about integrating the whole system with the daily, you know, instead of having hang tags that you come once a year and get, you just run it like, I mean, to Alderman Morse's point, to run the whole system sort of automatically? So that people get, you know, they replenish their parking, and maybe we could even get, you know, a prepay or a float kind of advantage out of that the way the tollway authority does?
You can pay for multiple days at these machines, but that only recognizes the parking space. So if you come and go, and someone else parks in your space, you've paid for them. This would benefit those who take, go downtown for the weekend or for a week if they go on vacation. They can leave their car there and pay for that whole time. We wanted to keep the parking permits in place because people then don't have to, they can just buy those once for a year or once a quarter, and then they're...
I'm just thinking, if they bought them through the machine with a credit card, then there'd be that much less paperwork and issuing hang tags and all the rest of it. I mean, you just, the machine could spit out a, some kind of a certificate.
That is a possibility through these machines? They have that capability to do that? That's not included in, in this bid.
Would it cost more to do that, or would it just be a software upgrade or something like that?
We'd have to design a different type of ticket so that it could be hung.
Right.
Something more durable perhaps. Another thing that we wanted to make this sort of be a test environment with just the two purchases, and if they are well-accepted, they can certainly be moved to the east side of town. The initial problem with the east side of town is getting the electricity to them, but building maintenance tells me that that can be done from the light poles that are out there. But it's a little more work, would be a little bit more costly to run the electricity to them.
Did you not get a solar option? Because the solar works perfectly fine.
They, many of these came with solar capabilities. We didn't request that because we had the electricity and that would be an added expense, but that is a, something that can...
Didn't they have issues with the solar ones downtown in the wintertime, getting all covered with snow and shutting down?
Yeah, issues with anything getting ice and snow.
Well, but it covered up the solar and they all shut down. That was the...
Actually, the solar will, will charge batteries in the unit, and then the units are run off the batteries. So what we'd probably do on the east side of town is we'd include the solar option and also hook up electricity so that during the day, it charged the batteries, and at night, it uses electricity from the lights.
I'm intrigued by the possibility of just completely integrating this whole thing and making it completely electronic and getting rid of all the paperwork at the city and issuing hang tags and processing checks and all that work that goes on into the, into the, you know, the monthly or the annual parking permits, you know, as a, as a space two on this. But I think it's, you know, it's a good place to start.
We can certainly pursue that option with the third-party credentials who do most of our vehicle stickers and parking passes right now and see if we can integrate it in with something they've got here. Because they do a lot of work on college campuses and so forth, and so they may already have the software and capabilities to do it. So we can certainly look into that.
I'm going to throw out the dumb question just for the fun of it. When I'm downtown and I charge core cost filing fees by credit card, there is an extra amount charged because the city has to pay a processing fee over and above what the normal fee is. Will the use of a credit card, say you're charging $3, will it be $3 to the customer or $3 plus a servicing charge? Will that be passed on, or is that going to be something the city eats?
That it can go either way. We can make adjustments in the machine so if they're using a credit card, those fees are attached to the credit card user, and the cash user just uses the straight $3.
Okay, because, yeah, again, looking towards the future, we're discounting if we accept payment by credit card, and most of the other towns at this point pass those costs on as an additional charge.
On the other hand, if you're trying to get people to convert, you might not want to disincent them at the beginning.
Yeah, just as though...
The discount might be a small price to pay for having, using, collecting on a credit card.
Maybe get them everybody, get everybody used to it and then do it.
Yeah.
Sounds great, guys. Thank you.
Can I just make one clarifying point? One, it's going to be on your agenda later on. Part of your motion is going to have to be to waive the bidding process because it's not the low bidder. So just to be safe and make sure that the record and everything is clear, the first step should be waive the bidding process, and the second step would be to award the contract.
Thank you.
The only thing I would say is really consider not accepting cash. I'll say it one more time. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a discussion of Barra. I imagine Kathy, that is you. We all heard the news about potential donation to Barra, an anonymous donor, and thank you for bringing us up to speed tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Morse, members of the committee. Based on that lead-in, we are here to have a follow-up discussion with you based on Woodland's announcement on, I think it was the 20th of September. What I'd like to do tonight is just provide you with a little bit of history, do a quick review, and then talk about some process options with you. We are looking for some direction, no action from you tonight, but direction from the council, from the committee of the hall with respect to how you would like us to process this request that Woodland's has, is likely to bring forward any day. So just to start with, just some background for anyone who is not familiar, Barra Campus is a 23-acre parcel located in southeast Lake Forest. It originally was part of a 40-acre parcel that included the current campus of Woodland's Academy, as well as a small wooded parcel that sits between Barra Campus and South Park Quick review of the timeline, in 1901, the Religious of the Sacred Heart purchased this approximately 40-acre site, and the purpose of purchasing this was to construct a new home for the Academy of the Sacred Heart. The Academy of the Sacred Heart today is Woodland's Academy. So originally, this site was purchased to house Woodland's Academy. In 1904, the construction of Old Main was completed, and the Academy of the Sacred Heart moved into that, that structure. Tabor Wing was completed in 1924. Let me back up for a moment. In 1918, Barra College was accredited, and in 1918, Barra College moved in and occupied the south wing of Old Main. 1924, the Tabor Wing, which formerly housed the chapel, was completed. Between mid-'50s and mid-'60s, there were a number of new buildings constructed on the campus, including the buildings that now house Woodland's Academy, or some of the buildings that now house Woodland's Academy. In 1961, Woodland's Academy left Old Main, moved across the ravine, then became known as Woodland's Academy, was no longer known as Academy of the Sacred Heart, moved across the ravine and established their home, their campus, and the buildings in which they're currently located. After many years of operation at the site, Barra College announced that it was closing. DePaul University stepped in, purchased the site in 2001, very quickly moved into some work on renovating Old Main, starting in the sub-basement, spent a considerable amount of money, and really never got above the sub-basement with the work that they had completed. In December 2003, DePaul announced to the city that they were leaving Barra Campus. Almost 10 years ago, the City Council first had the discussion in response to DePaul University's announcement about what to do with Barra Campus. The mayor at that time, Mayor Presslack, then formed a community planning team. In March of 2004, that community planning team met for about six months and was charged with really looking for a solution for Barra Campus for the long term, one that would be in the best interest of the overall community. In 2004 and 2005, DePaul University conducted a wide search for a new user of Barra Campus. City staff played a role in, in some of those interviews and some of those discussions. In January of 2006, that new owner, Barra Woods LLC, took ownership of the Barra property and then came before the city's Historic Preservation Commission, Plan Commission, and ultimately the City Council with a proposed redevelopment of the site, including adaptive reuse of Old Main for condominiums. And in April 2008, the City Council approved the Barra Woods development. As you know, that development never happened. The plat for that development was never recorded. So in, in 2000, in June 2010, Harris Bank, after a several-month-long foreclosure process... So in, in 2000, in June 2010, Harris Bank, after a several-month-long foreclosure process to ownership of Barra Campus, and since that time, or even just before that time, Harris Bank conducted a search for a new buyer, a new developer of Barra Campus. And that really brings us to today. Woodland, Woodlands' Academy, as I noted on just the middle of last month, held a community meeting and made their announcement. Just to summarize their announcement, anonymous donors have acquired an option to purchase Barra Campus. That option runs for 120 days, ends on December 20th. The intent of the donors is to gift the entire 23 acres of Barra Campus to Woodlands' Academy, essentially as a blank campus to allow the entire 23-acre parcel to be used exclusively for education-related purposes. The anonymous donors have made it clear that the purchase, which again needs to close by the end of, or by mid-December, is contingent upon gaining approval of the demolition of Old Main. I did hear from Harris Bank's representatives that the timing is, is critical to them. They also, for reasons of managing their own affairs, it's important to them to have this closed by the end of this calendar year. After that announcement, city staff had some internal meetings, met with the city attorney, and tried to talk through if this is going to come forward. What is the best process for the city to consider this? How can we be transparent? How can we move forward with the public process that will appropriately address the issues? Tonight, we want to present three options to you. I'm going to go into each of these a little bit more in detail. We are going to make a recommendation and tonight, we're not asking for any, any decisions on the demolition question itself, but we are asking for direction from the city council on how we should move this forward. Which option should we pursue? And just very quickly, option one is consider a request for demolition of the contributing structure, Old Main, in the historic district through the process which would take it through Historic Preservation Commission and city council. Option two would be to consider a request for an amendment to the historic district to move, to remove Old Main from that district. And option three, if the council is, is clear that, that what's been thrown on the table as a condition of the purchases is not something you want to pursue, then maybe we just want to give that direction immediately to Woodlands and to the anonymous donor to let them know, not to even bring a request for demolition forward. A little bit more detail. Option one, the petitioners would submit a request for demolition of the structure. Old Main is a contributing structure to the historic district. As a result, that application would need to go before the Historic Preservation Commission. The Historic Preservation Commission would hold a, a public hearing, deliberate, and they would make a decision on that request. The Historic Preservation Commission, under the current ordinance, is the final decision-making body on that request unless that decision is appealed. That decision could be appealed to the city council and the city council would review the record and you could decide to uphold that decision, reverse that decision, or remand that decision back to the city council, back to the Historic Preservation Commission for further deliberation. Importantly, in this process, the HPC is the final decision-maker. It does set up that process of an appeal, the opportunity for an appeal being available, and then it, it essentially brings that matter before the city council and you would determine whether or not, to be very simple about it, the Historic Preservation Commission made the right decision or made the wrong decision based on the criteria in the code. As the Historic Preservation Commission and the city council looked at that request, you would need to look at the demolition standards and determine whether the request is in compliance with those standards. Would this decision, if it one way, one way or another, have a long-term, long-term impact on the preservation ordinance? I don't know, but that certainly is something that should be considered. Option two proposes a little bit different approach. This approach would require the petitioner to submit an application for an amendment to the city's historic district. In a moment, I'll show you a map. And it's clear from the historic district that it was carefully configured to extend out to pick up Old Main. Not even all of Barra Campus is in the historic district. So the request that would be submitted would be a request for an amendment to remove Old Main from the historic district. Based on the current code procedures, that request would need to be, be considered by the Historic Preservation Commission. However, the commission would not be the final decision-maker on that, in that action. The Historic Preservation Commission would forward a recommendation to the city council. The city council would be the final decision-making body. If the amendment to the district was approved, then the demolition request would be considered, not under the standards in the Historic Preservation Ordinance, but under, under the standards in the building code. Again, just to summarize, in this scenario, the city council is the final decision-maker, avoids that situation of, of an appeal and needing to judge the decision of the Historic Preservation Commission. The district was configured with an appendage to include Old Main and the building code would provide the standards for demolition if it's removed from, from the district as opposed to the Historic Preservation Ordinance. This is the southern half of the city's original historic district. This is the east side. It does extend further to the north. But the majority of the district is, is compact, but you do see this area where the district was configured specifically actually reaching across a, a small portion of Woodlands' property to pick up Old Main. And this is the, the area that would be considered for a removal from the district. The third option, just to put everything on the table, is really a do-nothing option and, and simply to get direction from the city council upfront that this is not something that the city wants to consider, it's not something that the city wants to support. What that would mean is that the anonymous donor would not pursue purchase of the property, that Harris Bank would immediately resume a search for a new buyer, a new developer of the property. It would mean that there would be an unknown timeline for what happens to Barra Campus. As I noted, the city council first talked about this in February, it'll be 10 years. If this option is not considered, is not desired by the city council, that would mean that the city is going to have to consider some alternative uses for the property. Some of those uses may bring with them some density numbers or some traffic impacts as a trade-off to making sure that whatever happens on the site is economically viable. So with that, we, we tried to cover the spectrum. After discussion, city staff is recommending that the council direct us to move forward with option two. Again, we're not here tonight to, to talk about whether this is something you could ultimately support, but simply, is this the right option? Is this the best option for considering this request? Do you want us to consider this request or do you want us to send a different message?
And if I might chime in for one point. The distinction between option one and option two may seem to be a distinction with a lot of difference, but in fact, it has some material legal implications. Under option one, the city council, if it comes to you, you'll be acting in an adjudicatory status, which is from the, from a legal perspective, one that has, it's subject more to judicial review and it's going to be subject to more specific standards in making that review. If we use option two, you're going to be acting in a legislative capacity and the standard by which that challenge or any challenge to that decision, whatever the decision might be, is going to be a, a much higher threshold for a challenger. So it was in part to, to position the city council in a more authoritative position, whatever choice you all make, that option two was viewed as the, the better approach. I think from the standards of the Historic Preservation Ordinance, we also saw that there were some clearer bases on which to distinguish how we were going to make a decision either for or against. It gets a little more muddled when you're looking at the, the review process going from the Historic Preservation Commission as the final decision-maker and the city council just as an appellate body. So the, the reason in part has to do with some legal technicalities, but they are important technicalities and I didn't want to have that miss your, your radar screen as you're giving consideration to this.
I had a question as to what the physical condition of Old Main is nowadays.
That is information that, that we will get as this process moves forward. We know that the physical condition of the building when we were dealing with Barra Woods necessitated a, a great deal of, of work, but that is certainly information that we will need as, as we go through this process.
Following up on Bob's question, with the historic district ordinance, if a building was in such a state of disrepair that it created a nuisance to the public despite it being in an historic district, could the city order its demolition?
The standards in the ordinance do not recognize neglect of a building, failure to maintain it as a justification for demolition. A, a building can still be significant, can still be considered historic and be in bad condition. So I think that's a slippery slope. As, as we look at the standards in the building code, those are a little bit different.
Okay. But I mean, if there was, if it created a public danger at some point and being a structure 10 stories tall plus, yeah, I mean, would it be something that the city could either order its restoration, which economically probably would be impassable, or the only alternative would be for public safety to order its demolition?
Kathy, would you like me to take that handoff? Part of the consideration, again, when staff was making its recommendation as to the approach to, to consider this, if the council is interested in considering it, is to avoid precisely the dilemmas that are involved in the question you raise. If we consider this through the certificate of appropriateness in connection with the demolition, the standards, as Kathy said, do not include grounds for demolition based on neglect or, or condition. And it presented to us a fairly difficult challenge to reconcile the public safety issues on the one hand and the historic preservation issues on the other. If the consideration were based on whether or not it should remain in the historic district because of its geographic remoteness, that's a distinct issue that the, the council would make as a legislative matter. And then if the council were to say, yes, it were to be removed, then we would go into the building code standards, which are much more focused on the condition of the building rather than on the historic importance of the building. Again, there, there are some clear conflicting goals when it's considered as part of a, an historic district and whether or not it should be demolished. And in part of our consideration as making a recommendation was to try to provide a little more clarity as to what those goals would be.
Have we always required a replacement structure when it's considered under the historic preservation?
Ruins are considered protected under historic, ruins are protected under historic preservation. So, I, I spent time on HPC and I'm on the National Trust, but it said, the building itself, if it collapses and turns into ruins, it remains protected.
No, I'm, my question is, if you apply for demolition permit, if you apply for demolition permit under HPC, don't you necessarily have to have proposed a replacement structure? Or can you apply for demolition permit absent a replacement structure request and let the two-year statute run?
The two-year statute does not apply within the historic preservation district. And if a replacement structure is proposed, yes, you would need to bring both the demolition and the replacement structure forward at the same time.
So the replacement structure proposal isn't prerequisite to making a demolition permit request under HPC?
If a structure is just intended to be taken down for open space.
Yeah.
Then the replacement structure wouldn't come into play. But if there is a replacement structure proposed, yes, they both have to come in at the same time.
Kathy, have we, have we ever previously considered a request for an amendment to the historic district in a so-and-so? And just what is, generally, what would be the basis for such a request?
The historic districts, the local districts were adopted in 1998 and no, we've never requested a, or we've never considered a request to, to amend the district, to remove a property from the district. The city council has heard a number of requests to designate additional properties as, as local landmarks. So we have not considered that. And the basis for considering a change to the district, as the city attorney mentioned, districts are intended to be compact. And, and it's clear in this case that there was a configuration of the district that reached out to grab Old Main. But also in considering the district boundaries, certainly the, the history of this particular property could be considered. Again, we're not here tonight to argue whether or not an amendment to the district should be supported or not, so I don't want to go into all those reasonings. But we certainly would need to present a series of findings and, and we don't know at this point whether the plant, the Historic Preservation Commission would recommend in support or whether the city council would approve it.
Does the condition of the building ever come into play if it's a building that simply cannot be restored or rehabilitated? Is that ever a basis for a request?
As the city attorney just explained, with historic structures, it's, it's real difficult to simply base a decision to remove it from the district or to demolish it based on condition. That could create a situation where people are saying, I'm not going to do a thing to my historic residents or, so I, I think condition is difficult. But I think the bigger picture, the fact that this community has studied and, and really sought out a solution for this property for 10 years, for instance, that might come into play in, in looking at realistic alternatives. The uniqueness of the building might also be a factor.
If I might just piggyback on that, there is a slightly different standard. Again, there's more discretion in the second option than there is in the first. The first has very specific standards that have to be found in order to reach a decision. The second one is a legislative decision, has to be founded on one of several criterion, criteria. But it, it isn't necessarily limited to that because of the legislative nature of that decision. It does have to have that, one of those criteria met, but once met, other factors can be factored, can be considered as part of the determination.
I have a, I have a practical question. We, we've been told through your presentation that this all has to happen by, let's say, for the sake of argument, December 15th. That's roughly 60 days from today. With notice requirements, public meeting notices, various approvals and, and normal procedures that the city needs to follow to go through this process, has anybody looked at a timeline to determine whether it's even possible for us to get to the place that Barra and, or that the Woodlands and Harris want us to get in, by December 15?
We have looked at a timeline and I've seen the boards and commissions and city council do amazing things when, when you want to. But it, it also may be that, that if we're through the process and if there seems to be a clear direction, that, at that point, the anonymous donors will need to make that decision. But, but technically, can we get through the process? Yes. Is it going to happen that expeditiously? I, I don't know.
I just have a question and it's the chicken and the egg argument and I think I touched on this this afternoon when I spoke. The one dilemma I'm having with the whole thing is the sale hasn't occurred, the sale's contingent on our approval. Now, if we okay this for whatever reason and the sale for whatever reason doesn't occur.
Conditional approval.
Okay, we have a legal means to.
Especially if we are dealing with it in option two. Again, going back to the legislative nature of it, we can have our ordinance effective upon various events occurring. If those events don't occur, then the legislation becomes annulity and nothing, nothing effectively changes. We have a little less certainty of being able to do that in making the option one decision.
But the trouble I have is, and it's simply put, and it's just the speed of the decision, and I'm not going to say my feeling on it, but once we make our feelings known. and I'm not going to say my feeling on it, but once we make our feelings known for one petitioner, and it might be a favorable petitioner at this point, if another one comes by that's not so favorable, and we've kind of said, well, we'd do it for one, but not the other, where are we?
Again, that's one of the reasons why we've recommended the legislative approach as opposed to the adjudicatory approach. We always, the standard for someone to challenge our legislative decision is that we have to be found to be arbitrary, capricious, and unreasonable. Presumably, if an ordinance comes to you for that, it will, A, have explanations as to why, B, it will have triggers as to the effective date, and I would anticipate, again, if that is the recommendation, that we're going to make sure that it's fairly narrowly tailored, so that if all of the conditions that we're anticipating don't occur, it's not going to be an easy path for someone to follow to do the same.
And last question, devil's advocate question. I'm thrilled with the generosity of the anonymous donor, and I think it's a wonderful gift, but to a certain degree, with what's being asked of city council, maybe based on some guarantee that will allow the secrecy of the gift to remain, I'm hoping there'll be some disclosure at some point of who's actually gifting what. If, depending on who's making the gift, there's different benefits that might be received by whoever the donor is, and I think it's a relevant cause. Could that be something that would be divulged?
First of all, a lot of people already know who it is, to be honest with you.
Well, without getting into specifics, yeah, I mean, it may have some consideration. I don't know. Yeah, I'm just throwing that out there.
I have a point, a little unrelated, on these options. I think, coming from HPC, I think it's important that option two lets them off the hook to some extent. I mean, to be able to be forced with the five standards for demolition, of which none of them would be met, they would be obligated to uphold the ordinance, which would put us in this conundrum again, and with no less than a dozen visits to the site and the property in Old Main and the tours of the inside, I can tell you, it's a real conundrum. There's no, there's no solution to fixing up that building, short of spending tens of millions of dollars. And I think we're going to end up in that spot. This is just me talking. I think that rather than overriding and weakening our ordinance, I think option two allows us to, while it is a bit of a workaround, protect the integrity of the ordinance and the Historic Preservation Commission, while doing something that makes sense.
In the sake of moving the process along, is there anybody here who would be supportive of option three, or can we just take that off the table? Is option three out as far as everybody on this council's concerned?
Kathy, are you looking for a vote? Is that...
Not a vote. We're looking for direction from the council as to which option to pursue. Once we know which option, we'll meet again with Woodlands, Harris Bank as appropriate, and then we will handle this like any other petition. We don't look at who the people are that are involved, but we look at the facts of the situation, develop findings and conditions, and bring it back.
I like option two.
If I might suggest, we're kind of running out of time. If there aren't any more questions, maybe we could quickly go through and maybe ask the question of, does anybody object to option number two?
I do have, I'm sorry, I do have one more question. The question is, and Kathy, you and I have spoken about this, how do we then incorporate some other issues into the approval process? I guess, I'm, I mean, quite candidly, I'm a supporter of this, but I'm a supporter of this with some contingencies, and those contingencies being things like what we do with the front lawn and what we do with the ravine. And how do we incorporate that into this process?
Those will all be discussions we'll have, if you direct us to move forward with option two. As the city attorney said, I expect this will come back to, first, the HPC and then the council with a number of conditions. Maybe there's conservation easements, or maybe there's other requirements for documentation of the building, not unlike we do with any other petition. So, those can be as extensive as you want.
Yeah, I think with option two, one of the things that we're doing is making sure, I think, as David highlighted here, is making sure we're including HPC, and we're going to have the ability to get all the input, and we're going to have public meetings, and we're going to have an opportunity to air it and hear the concerns that are out there. I think, frankly, that puts the council in a better position to make a better decision at the end of the day, and make sure that there are contingencies, that we're able to incorporate those into any kind of final action. Any other discussion before, we're out of time here.
Is that sufficient direction?
I think I heard direction to move forward with option two.
Option two.
Thank you.
You certainly didn't hear any objection to that idea.
Okay. The next item, if there's no other comment on that, I'm going to go quickly here. If there's, the next is an opportunity for public comment. Is there any public comment? Hearing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
It's on the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned. Council will begin in two minutes or three minutes?
Let's see, five.
Five minutes. Thank you all.